Welcome to Spencer Eastbrook Field Region's School District Committee Meeting of December 10, 2013. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a little bit different setup tonight. We're in Eastbrook Field. We'll hear the students' report. We have the microphone over there. They can come up to if they're here. By all means.
Hello? Oh, that's not working.
It's not on yet?
Hello? Ooh, that's still not working.
Do you have our audio specialist coming down?
Okay.
It is.
It's very, very faint.
Okay. So hello, good evening everybody. Alou Ciefer-Garsky, a freshman at David Proudey. There you go. Okay, so last Friday of December 6th, the Student Council held a community babysitting service for parents who want to have like a date night or go shopping. It was $2 per kid or $6 per family. They had a very good turnout of about 30 attending students. Okay. Proudey is also conducting many fundraising races for the holiday season. Each class were having a penny war to see who can raise enough money for Toys for Tots. And also two events had November 20th where that we, the Foreign Culture Club, held a collaborative dance for the Life Skills Kids. And we also did a foreign culture day where every student was asked to wear something that depicted their culture. And for upcoming events, we have the blood drive being held Thursday, December 12th, in our Proudey Gymnasium. Also on Thursday at 12, junior class is holding their class fundraiser. They're having Dan Kandell come, the hypnotist from Spencer Fair. The cost is $8 ahead of time or $10 at the door. Everybody's welcome to come to support the junior class. And then also Friday will be the kickoff of the basketball season. Boys will be traveling to Grafton and girls will be staying home at Proudey. And Proudey has also recently partnered up with Quinn-Sigamon College for the first time to offer the students a three-credit college course after school on Mondays and Wednesdays. This offers students of Dable Proudey to attend a free college course to get a head start on their college education. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Maggie Paul. I am the president of the National Junior Arms Society at Knox Trail. On November 16th, Jason Manette performed an amazing magic show filled with excitement and illusion. It was a great family fun night. On November 26th, peer leaders sponsored a holiday movie. All proceeds were donated to Toys for Tots and Toys for Joy. Today was the Student of the Month breakfast for eight students and their parents. The students were honored for demonstrating the character trait of the month, which was fairness. Also today, the peer leaders in the National Junior Arms Society went to the high school to help wrap presents for Toys for Tots. On December 13th, the National Junior Arms Society will sponsor the first ever of the sweater contest. December 18th will be our holiday concert starting at 6:30. Our boys and girls basketball and cheerleading teams have been elected. Our first scene is this Friday in Grafton. Finally, after being nominated by a former student, Sarah Stoddard, Mr. DeLongchamp was honored as Westfield State's annual celebration of teachers. The award reflects upon teachers who have supported and shaped students' vision of excellence in teaching. Sarah Stoddard wrote in her nomination that junior high is a very difficult time growing up. It is great to have an adult that every student can rely on. He always carried a smile on his face and it was evident he loved his job. Congratulations to Mr. De.
Thank you very much. Anything from the Teachers Association?
Uh, nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Um, hearing for the visitors. Any visitors like to come up and speak to Mike? Mr. Stevens? Selectman from Spencer? Walking much better now?
Yes, I'm glad you noticed. It's my first night off trudges. I could be skiing, I could be dancing, I could be at the gym, but I choose to spend it with you. So I hope you realize how special you are. Just if I could get this up a little higher. Thank you. I don't have to tell you that it's been a contentious year wrangling over the cost of providing a quality education. Ever since January, I've been looking for a good moment to offer up an idea. And now that the budget is set, this seems like a good time. And the good news is my idea doesn't cost anything. I've long believed what I'm about to say. I believed it before becoming a selectman, before moving to Spencer. It's something born of challenging school-aged kids in Worcester. We moved here in Spencer in 1993. On our way to final budget numbers, we talked a lot about educational outcomes and student-teacher ratios. What I have to say, would I know improved performance measures that make those ratios seem not so important? So my idea, by no means original, and forgive me if this goes a little too far, it comes in the form of a challenge to parents. And that is to send your kids to school ready to learn, physically equipped with books and supplies they need and with completed homework in hand, psychologically primed to listen, respond, participate, and behave in a disciplined school environment, and mentally prepared with a curiosity, motivation, and work habits that good learning requires. When I talked with voters about their educational experiences this past year, student-teacher ratios in excess of 30 were not uncommon. That was certainly my own experience growing up in a little town in New York State. We learned a lot, we were prepared, and there was discipline. My own kids attended classes in excess of 30 when we were living in Worcester. These situations were not alarming because everyone knew what was expected of us. My kids certainly knew what was expected of them in classes and they also knew that if there are any problems, that we would support the teacher. I'd repeat that, we would support the teacher. I'm not talking about volunteering excessively at school or going to every parent-teacher conference. That is certainly desirable, but it's not possible for all family schedules. In my situation, my wife worked full-time and our business allowed me to get a little more involved. What I'm referring to here is letting your kids know what's expected, preparing them at home, and following through on what happens at school. At times this past year, I could just imagine what many of you were thinking when I stood up to make one comment or another. I'm sure some were thinking that Stevens doesn't know what it is, what it's like in the classroom, or he doesn't know what it's like being responsible for the education of a school district. I'd have to agree with you to some extent, and I still don't know everything that the school committee and the staff has to face. Now I'm speaking as a former student and I can remember back that far. And as a parent of once, much younger kids. And the truth of what I say here, I believe, is undeniable. I think I've taken enough citizen input time. I wanted to say that if I've offended any parents or gone too far with some of my challenge, I apologize. I did not mean to sound preachy. I just wanted to underscore, excuse me. I just wanted to underscore a topic I believe is a fundamental success for our schools. You know, whatever resources we devote this year or in the future, we need parents to send their kids to school ready to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Anything else from the visitors? If not, we'll go on to the secretary's report. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 12th, 2013, which you have in front of you. Any corrections?
Motion to accept the meeting, committee meetings from November 12th, 2013.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, will accept those. Uh, the executive session meetings of November 12th, 2013. We have in front of you. Any changes or corrections?
Motion approved. Everything.
Second. Motion to, in second, to approve and to attain. Uh, hearing any discussion? Seeing none, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, will accept those. Going on to the special school committee meeting of November 21st, 2013. You have those minutes in front of you.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion approved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go on to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, will accept those. Uh, the executive session that took place on Thursday, November 21st, 2013, that you have in front of you.
Motion approved and retained.
Second. Motion to approve and attain in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. To accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, will accept that. Now going on to the financial report for approval expenditure report of November 30th, 2013, that you have in front of you. Yes, Kurt?
I have some questions to ask.
Go ahead, Kurt.
On the first one, it says school committee 100, oh, it said 1,110. It says $1,500. And then, uh, 14 budget. If you go to the next page, uh, school committee $68,262. Could somebody explain that to me?
First page.
That's the FY14 budget. $1,500 for school committee. Turn to the next page. It's administration, school committee, $68,262.
Kurt, can you hold this one second? Julie's gonna get that first part. She'll get that first part.
First page is salaries. So the $1,500 is...
I can't hear you, Julie. Excuse me.
The first page is salaries. That, the $1,500 is the school committee secretary, Steichen. Then on the second page, that starts to be where it supplies and expenses. And $186,000 is including $120,000, that's required contingency and the, I think it's 50, some 58,000 or something around there, for the required stabilization funding because of the legislation, as well as a few other advertising and other supplies that are involved.
What my question is, I still don't understand it. If you want to explain a little better. On the second page, Julie, uh, it says school committee, $68,000. That was just for school committee who's here tonight, correct?
The $68,000, the first column is the budget as it was adopted originally. And then the second column is the budget that we need to adopt tonight. The $68,000 is the stabilization fund. And then you'll see in the new budget that has to be adopted, it's higher because we now have the $120,000, that's a required contingency as part of the new state set number.
Okay, so if, I understand that. To get back to administration, then what's, what's $1,500 for? On the top?
The school committee secretary, Steichen.
Okay, 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 I understand that. I got a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Kurt.
On page, oh, under $5,000, it says, uh, $5,500 debt, service, and bank fees. We talked about this about, uh, eight months ago. And, uh, I have a question why it's $13,000. I understand that, uh, it should be less than that because I talked to the treasurer of the town of Spencer and they pay no bank fees to the sovereign bank, which, uh, we use, I believe.
Some of those fees are included because of the borrowing that we had to do because of the deficit. So there's interest and other charges because of that. And we do have some small bank fees with the bank accounts that we currently have.
Okay.
But bank fees make up $4,500 of that and $8,500 is for short-term debt for the borrower. For interest on the note.
So would you ask the treasurer, I don't see him tonight, would you ask the treasurer if we are paying any checking fees?
We are paying some checking fees. We have return checks. We have, I think one of our accounts has a fee included. Not all of our accounts, but we do have multiple accounts and they're not all.
And then on page one, on the general fund expense report, it says human resources down on 1420. We don't have a human resources person, do we?
No, it's not for a person. That's for the fees associated with the, um, yeah, FSA plans that the district offers. There's a fee associated with the benefit that we offer.
And my last and final, uh, question I had to, uh, on, uh, on page nine, under, uh, under electric bills. I think Mr. Clear brought this up before. I don't know if Dr. Melly wants to answer this, but Wyer Village School was, it's $110,000. And the rest of schools within the $60,000 range. Has that ever checked into to see why the costs are so high?
The audit wasn't done. I haven't received any feedback yet from them. But at that point, at this point, that is what the actual electric bill is coming in at. So we're still waiting to hear back on the audit which took place.
You got any idea when that, when that audit's gonna be available to us? For the first FY15 budget?
I'm not sure. I know they're working on it. They've been contacting me because they want to know what money we have to put into something to fix it. And since we have nothing, they haven't been as quick to get back to us.
If we could have that for a FY15 budget, I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Is any further discussion on the budget, FY14? If not, we'll go on to the, uh, my finished business, the curriculum report, DSAC update.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I comment on that though, I do want to give a shout out and a pat on the back to a number of staff and students. I had the pleasure over the past couple of weeks of getting out of the office and dealing with some of the business as usual and participating in some of the great programs that we have going on here in the school district. So just before Thanksgiving, I was able to attend the high school play, Doctor Evil and...
Basket of Kittens.
And the Basket of Kittens. Outstanding, outstanding. Uh, I was so impressed. Now, you're looking at someone that's been doing this for, you know, 100 years, going to student performances, but you really can tell when the students get into it. And by goodness, they really did. They, they put everything that they had from their acting talent and I was impressed with their enthusiasm. So I want to thank them for their efforts and certainly the staff that was involved. And thanks to the folks that came out. I happened to attend on a Friday night. And the, uh, the house wasn't packed, but those that went there certainly got their money's worth. So congratulations to our students and I hope we can continue with such activities. I also was able to participate in the Life Skills Thanksgiving feast. Recently, just before Thanksgiving, I see Mr. Bechant was able to attend a number of the other staff as well. And the students certainly put their heart and soul into it. And to have them go around the tables with, whether it was parents or siblings or other family members and invited guests, to see the enthusiasm trying to serve and greet and welcome the folks that were able to attend was absolutely outstanding. There's not too many things that can move me to get goosebumps other than the Boston Celtics and the Bruins winning when we get down the wire. But certainly when you attend a program like that where the students know that you are interested to come and attend, but also you appreciate their involvement. We got a special group of children there and then the staff as well that came to participate and help them along. I also was able to participate in the Thanksgiving feast, which I understand is a tradition here at the Eastbrook Field Elementary School. Wonderful, wonderful activity that the staff and parent volunteers have been providing for a number of years. And I want you to know, there are very few places on this earth that you can go to a morning program and receive clam chowder at 10 o'clock. I happened to notice that most of the children were devouring the popcorn and some of the other treats, if you will, but I managed to finish two small bowls of clam chowder. So great activity for those youngsters and thanks again to all the people that did participate. And last but not least, as I originally said when I came into the district, I had fond memories of Spence Eastbrook Field, particularly David Proudey High School because my own children having competed with, in athletic programs, competed with David Proudey. And I knew there was something that I was missing and it was a memory of the hill, if you will, up behind the high school. And I couldn't remember whether it was a good or a bad memory. Well, having attended the football game on Thanksgiving Day, probably a clouded memory because there is no colder place on this earth than on the hill on a freezing cold day that we had. But again, a shout out to not only the players, but the staff and all folks that participated in that. It was well-run. And in particular, I want to compliment our cheerleaders and the drill team, Dave Barber from, the flags and what have you. But no one could be more brave than the band going out putting lips to metal when we've all been told, "Don't put your tongue on the pole in freezing cold weather." But they did it with a lot of spirit and were able to keep the tune and the beat and the rhythm of all the music that they had to play. So just a wonderful, wonderful series of events and I'm very, very proud to be a part of it and I'm sure there'll be many more as the year goes on. But congratulations to all of them. Now to continue on this, normally we would have Karen Zaleski give us a brief report on the curriculum piece, but unfortunately Karen was taken ill this weekend and had an emergency operation, appendicitis. And in a follow-up today, it was a little more involved, certainly when we get to this stage of our lives. I was fortunate enough to have mine done when I was in the eighth grade. Paid the price then, but for some reason or other, when you're a lot younger, you can rebound quicker. So Karen's gonna be laid up for a little bit of time, but we'll be in touch with her. I know you all share with me to wish her well and a speedy recovery. But to the point of the curriculum report, we continue to be intimately involved with the District and School Accountability and Assistance Center, as we refer to them as DSAC. They have been in over the past couple of weeks with their assistance team on a number of occasions. They visited, um, Lake Street Elementary and spent some time with the staff in and out of classrooms. They also visited with Knox Trail. And I understand they'll be coming back for follow-up visit at Wyer Village as well. So despite the fact that we didn't have our official report yet, as I have been keeping the committee and the public abreast, we've jumped into this with all fours, if you will, right from the summer and we will continue with the activities. And we're fortunate to have the assistance of the DSAC group that has come out. Part and parcel of that has been a number of professional development days that we have run. And we've also brought out the DSAC people to work with us on a variety of topics. One which is critically important in the district is the curriculum mapping and the curriculum alignment for all our disciplines. We also had some follow-up activities with data analysis and we're training teams, if you will, at the respective buildings. We're also spreading out from our district curriculum committee, the DCC, and branching into the building leadership teams, the BLTs. Each school will have a group of people that will be intimately involved in it. And, um, the report finally is completed. That I have seen the draft from the DSAC folks. They're doing some minor editing to it based on my review. And the schedule as it stands right now is that they will have that back to me hopefully before the Christmas holiday. It then will be shared with the administrative team and the DSAC group itself will come out for a session with the administrative leadership team on December 6th. And originally I had scheduled the DSAC team then to come out to report to the school committee and publicly for January 14th, but I forgot that we have a date change and the meeting has been switched to January 7th. So I've been back in touch with the DSAC folks to see if they can come on the 7th and if not, I would think that we might be having some additional meetings as we get into January because of budget and negotiations. So they're gonna try to work it on the 7th, but I'll keep you abreast of that when they can commit with this date change, okay? The committee will have the report ahead of time, once I do get the final report and they give me the release so that I can get it out to you. It's quite involved. It covers the various sections that they had identified and I'm not gonna steal their thunder by going into it. But along with the detail of the report, there are a number of data points, if you will, because the classification that the school district is in called a level three. If you remember from the homework I gave you some time ago that the state classifies districts one through five. We happen to be a level three. And that means that we're not quite performing as well as we should be relative to the MCAS scores. And that's over a four-year period. But to that extent, they will review that for us. They have a number of recommendations that they will bring forward of where they see the areas for improvement. And then once that's all said and done, it's really up to us of what we're going to do about it, whether we're gonna take it seriously enough, that we're going to commit some resources, time, and energy. And I think that you've already seen that right from the beginning of the summer when we had a small group of individuals participate with the DSAC group through a curriculum mapping exercise. We went down to Bridgewater State University and we're continuing those activities now. So I think that certainly will lend itself to our plans of how we go forward, even if we have limited resources because of the budget and the financial situation we're involved in. That still doesn't give us the right to simply sit back and say, "Well, there's nothing we can do about it." We're simply gonna have to come up with some creative ways of addressing these issues. So that's the curriculum report for this evening and we will continue to work on that. And as we get the DSAC group to come forward, there'll be additional activities that we'll be scheduling with them for the remainder of the year. And we'll continue to report out to the school committee and to the public. But I think we've taken the high road, if you will, that we realize the situation we're in and we're gonna be honest and forthright about addressing those needs.
Thank you, Dr. Melly. Uh, now go on to FY14 budget update.
If you, uh, look, and I don't know if you received it as a separate page, but in the, uh, financial report, if you, uh, leaf through it, you will see, one, two, three, the fourth page in. You can see that there's, uh, a reduction list, uh, that we've put together. And, uh, the format that you have for your report is what, uh, we've worked out with the State Department of Education as well, based on their requirements. But to the point, if you look at the reductions, uh, I'm going to, you know, kind of set the tone on it, but I'll ask Julie to walk us through it. But in effect, to get from the budget that the committee had originally approved at, uh, 24 million, um, and what the commissioner now has set the budget, uh, we're rounding now to 23.4 million. And in that, the commissioner set that budget figure, that is the approved budget that we must operate with now and we have to make any and all necessary adjustments. You also are aware of, uh, last week, I think it was, that the town of Spencer, through their town meeting, officially approved it. And I believe, uh, East Brookfield is meeting Thursday evening, if I'm correct. Monday? All right, I'm sorry, Monday evening. And they'll go through a similar exercise. But the committee really needs to act on this tonight, even if it's a formality, because ultimately the Commissioner of Education will be the one that will determine whether these reductions or any variation of, um, reductions would be approved. The Commissioner now is the one that, uh, takes over, uh, not our operation, but certainly the financial parameters, if you will, uh, including these reductions. So that's what's before the committee this evening. And originally, we had targeted approximately $700,000 that would have to be reduced to get to a balanced budget. Uh, there are some adjustments here that, uh, net out to 580,000, but I'll let Julie pick it up from there.
Okay, so we kind of go through the list. Um, there's $124,000 for supplies. Basically, that's across the board, elimination of almost any of the other ones. Um, grant adjustment were the grants that we, um, received in September after we'd adopted the $24 million budget. So we were able to charge some things off to bear. Um, taking another $100,000 from Circuit Breaker, um, for special ed tuitions. Our unemployment bill, um, we actually haven't really seen an $84,000 savings yet. Uh, by the time we were done calling everyone back and having people find other jobs, we have moneyed less people unemployment than we originally found we would have had, but basically due to people finding other jobs elsewhere. Um, we're eliminating one and a half special ed teachers. Um, we have some salary adjustments and savings from teachers that weren't hired until just recently at a lower rate than we had anticipated. Eliminating fifth grade band, uh, savings from our HRA, which we believe will come in probably about $30,000 less than we budgeted. Reduction in psychologist hours will save us about $27,000. Um, reduction in facilities is about $13,000. Uh, reduction in the high school bookkeeper will save us about $10,000. Uh, then with a little bit of destabilization because that's a percentage of our budget. So the budget being low means we can lower that. And then the state has mandated that we put this $120,000 in as a contingency for possible unknown things that could happen between now and the end of the year. So that gives us the $580,000 that we need to cut from the $24 million budget.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, if I may, there's two things I'd just like to point out on it, as was brought to my attention by, uh, my colleagues on the fifth grade band issue. We had reported out for some time that, uh, that was, uh, still there reluctantly. But in that, we weren't able to fill the position at the outset of the school year. Uh, we felt that, uh, we still would keep that there because we hadn't actually begun the band program. Therefore, uh, we're not really pulling it away from something that we, uh, implemented. We didn't have it, uh, in the first place. But it has, uh, a double effect at East Brookfield because it was also a fifth, sixth grade band arrangement. But in that, the sixth grade, uh, has moved up to Knox Trail from, uh, Wyer Village. East Brookfield still has sixth grade. So we're not benefiting at the fifth and sixth grade level here by not being able to bring forward the band. And then with all of this, uh, we still have to keep in mind that the state, uh, had requested of us, um, many times. And certainly the information had been shared over many months with our financial overseer. But, uh, within the last few weeks of coming to a determination of what the final budget would be, the state, uh, required of us for any potential financial liabilities, if we could, uh, quantify that better, if you will, to try to really nail it down. And we did do that for them. And the information has also been shared with the school committee and publicly, that we identified an additional $700,000 of potential liabilities. And I cautioned everyone as we were going forward to the district-wide meeting, that, uh, if we're not successful, then this liability that we have, if it ever comes to be, can put us in great, great, uh, risk. And, uh, I'm hoping that as time goes on, we can minimize and, and certainly in areas, if we can, um, avoid any of those, uh, financial liabilities, uh, the picture could improve. But right now, I want everyone to understand it. And I want the state to understand it, that we have a liability of over $700,000. That if some or all of that happens, we have absolutely no way of paying for those liabilities unless, unless we revisit the budget. And that's going to mean further reductions. And it doesn't take much to realize that at this stage of the game, six months into a budget, that the only place you really can get some substantial savings in terms of dollars and cents, not in terms of programs, but any savings of dollars and cents is with personnel. I hope we're not faced with that situation, but I want everyone to understand it clearly, that if any or all of it happens, we could be, could be, by the fourth quarter, in the same mess that you all inherited, uh, over this past school year. And by that, I mean, when we get to the fourth quarter, we have absolutely no way of covering our expenses unless we have some drastic reductions. But by the time we hit the fourth quarter, there's not an awful lot left to recover the type of money. Now, I'm not saying that to, to frighten anyone or to threaten, but I want everyone to mark my words on this chilly evening, that they were forewarned, that there is that potential, uh, risk, if you will. And as we go forward and as I say, some of these things, uh, get resolved, I'd be the first one to come forward and, and proudly announce to the committee and to the public that we may be, you know, one step closer, uh, to resolving this, uh, financial issue this year here. But, uh, it's not over till it's over. Um, I, I'd like to enjoy the winter. Um, don't want to rush to get to the fourth quarter, but, uh, that's what I'm really targeting right now. Okay?
So do you need a vote?
Yes.
To accept this? Correct?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that reduce the budget from 24 million to 23.4, uh, for savings of $580,000.
If I may, Kurt, on, on your motion, if I can give the exact figure. Okay. Uh, the exact figure is 23,451,558. We're rounding to 23.4, but the exact figure from the commissioner is 23,451,558. If you agree, put that in the motion?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second to accept this budget of 23,451,558. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, of course.
Kevin?
Yeah, I just want to say, and, and that means with these reductions as listed.
Correct.
Okay. Because the, the commissioner will be looking for that, that it actually was on this, um, activity that we have here. Sorry. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the superintendent. Uh, Dr. Melby, could you just give me the shot version on the Circuit Breaker? Um, how much the total amount of money is that we get on Circuit Breaker and how we're coming up with the 100,000? And just refresh my memory how the payments come in on that?
Right.
And how we owe any money?
If I may, I'm going to defer to Julie. But Circuit Breaker money is something that is permitted across the state. A number of years ago, the state, uh, came up with this term, Circuit Breaker. And it's an amount of money that they factor in for, um, um, high cost, special needs, um, budget items, if you will. And, and they, they review, uh, our, and everyone's, uh, financial report at the end of the year. And then they factor in, uh, what the additional costs are that we, we and others may not have been able to budget for. And then they create, um, a pool of money that they call Circuit Breaker. Okay? Julie, can you add to that, please?
Yeah, so at the end of the year, everyone submits all their special ed costs. And then when the state sets their budget, the state has a pool of money. The percentage can go anywhere from 55 to, I think it's 75. It's not usually fully funded. They announced on September 30th that we were getting funded, I think at the maximum to be funded. So there was additional money available that we didn't know about. So we can charge another $100,000 off because we're getting another $100,000 in tuitions to the Circuit Breaker fund. And we were able to reduce the general fund by that amount. But we couldn't have anticipated that it would come in that high. And they don't usually know until everyone submitted all of their claims and everything, to know what the state budget is, to know what the pool of money is to divide up. So we came in ahead this year. Since we're this far into the year, we now know that and we can charge additional money after. Does that answer your question?
Uh, historically, is there a ballpark number of where we're usually at?
Uh, I can't remember the exact amount, but usually the percentage is around like 60, 62%. I think we were around 75% from the home. I have to, I'd have to double check votes, but, but it ended up being about a hundred bucks or more, the percentage here was.
Where, where are the percentage?
Yeah, so the percentage of reimbursement was higher.
Okay.
So I can't remember the exact year we'll usually get, but it's based on the percentage of what you had over. They set a number that anything over whatever the target is, you get reimbursement percentage.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, next question, Dr. Melby, on the one and a half, uh, special ed teachers. Uh, what grade level are they coming from?
I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, my colleagues, but I believe it's the majority at the elementary level.
Elementary.
Uh, and what's happening is that, uh, if you recall, at, uh, one point in time, we had, I think it was two, um, uh, special ed teacher positions that we were holding on to. And, uh, as we went back and revisited that, uh, because of where we're at in this school year and then some adjustments that were made and some, uh, changes that were made with other existing staff, we were able to, uh, reduce this. So we're not eliminating services from anyone. It's just, we, uh, kind of shook things up and did it, uh, quite differently. I shouldn't say a little bit differently, quite differently, in order to recover this as a savings. Yeah. But typically at the elementary level.
Okay. And my last question is on the high school, uh, bookkeeper. Um, is that a total elimination of that position? Or is that just partial elimination? And what is the person's duties and who's going to pick up the slack, uh, if it is an elimination of any position?
Again, I'll let Julie jump in, but it's not a total elimination. It's, it's a portion of what we had from the original split, if you will, between the district treasurer slash bookkeeper. But we still have this function to, uh, fulfill, if you will, at the high school level. But we don't need it at the extent that we previously had it. Therefore, the dollar amount, we took as a savings. Is that correct, Julie?
That's my, thank you.
Any further questions, discussion on this panel? Hearing none will go to a vote. Does it have to be a roll call vote?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? It's accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, going on to new business, custodial supplies, materials update. Mr. Northwood requested a previous meeting.
Uh, if, if before we get into that, if I just make a, uh, final statement on this, uh, on the budget. Uh, we do hope to have the financial overseer come forward, uh, in January. If not January, we'll bump it over to, uh, uh, February. But we didn't want to have a conflict with the DSEC group coming out. They're going to take a little bit of time to do their presentation. So, uh, the overseer, uh, is more than agreeable to, to, you know, come at the appropriate time to kind of give a, you know, mid-year report of, uh, what his work has been and, and, uh, kind of state of the school district of where we're at financially. But that will be forthcoming.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Melby. Will either one of the overseers, uh, Dr. Melby, play an active role in our next, uh, budget round? Or will they just be basically approving or disapproving things that we put together?
Well, the DSEC group, uh, won't be involved in it because once they do their report and, and, you know, present it to the committee, uh, they will continue to work, uh, if you will, internally with the school administration and the school staff. The financial overseer will be intimately involved in the budget process because as we go forward now, if we thought we had close scrutiny by the commissioner up to this point, uh, it's even going to get closer. And, uh, you'll notice in the commissioner's letter that, uh, he defers to his contact person, John Sullivan, which we have been, uh, very involved with. But, uh, he'll become, um, more involved in the process, both directly with us and through the financial overseer. So, so everything that we do, um, relative to the financial piece, we have to walk it back through the overseer to the commissioner, through, uh, Mr. Sullivan. Yep.
Thank you.
And I, I'm cautioning these people as well, that we're not out of this yet. That fourth quarter is critical. All right? So no one should, including them. I was hoping that they'd be a little more generous with, uh, the budget to offset some of this. And, and I certainly would sleep much better knowing that we had a little bit of a buffer. We don't have that. So they're going to be, uh, very much aware of, uh, everything we do, step by step by step, because I think they're, uh, they're partners in this endeavor now.
Mr. Chairman, uh, back to the custodial supplies and materials update. Do you have any information on that?
The contract for design is included in your packet. He still gets three-year contracts and he will buy 90% of our supplies from them. This was done prior to my arrival.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Kurt.
Uh, after looking at that contract, I requested this to be brought forward, uh, as compared to a, a trash contract. And by going through and looking at this, I think, uh, we should go back off a bid. Uh, it says in here, you have to give them a 90-day notice. It was signed on 3/26/13. So if we got well for bid, again, we have to notify them in the next week or so that we're going off a bid. I think some of these prices are high. I'm not in the janitorial business, but just looking at some things, uh, it says, uh, of one-page ice melt, which is for rock salt or whatever. And, uh, you can buy it down to Walmart for $8 and they charge them 13.60. And, and I don't remember when this was going off a bid. Uh, I don't think we were told as of when, but, uh, I can't find it in my, in my, in my past, uh, reports. So with that being said, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we notify, uh, the company that we're going off a, for bid again. It's 90-day notice.
Can I just comment that number two, it says this party cannot terminate this agreement for three years.
Can I hear you, Julie?
On, under terms and proposals, it says that the parties agreed that this agreement cannot be terminated for three years.
But with that being said, it's, 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 it says in the contract, they have again, 90-day notice. And, uh, and, uh, it was signed by Yakim Superintendent at the time. Uh, I don't think this was, was, uh, uh, said so publicly, for the sake. Uh, and if we make the change now, which Dr. Melby just says, uh, that, that we got to, we have to cut some money here in the future. And I think this is the opportunity because if we don't do it now, in the contract, it says they got another year of, of a contract. So now we're going from three years, uh, we're going to down one year and go back up one year. So we have a three-year contract. What's stuck, it's an evergreen clause. And, and I can't understand, but we had it in our trash bin, that this evergreen clause plays out. Every year they get another year, so it never ends. And, and I'm not in favor of any contract. Uh, if it's a three-year contract, it's a three-year contract. We hire people on a three-year contract. Uh, there's nothing, they're saying that they got another year if we don't say nothing. And this is what it says in here. So by that being said, it's, it's a three-year what it says in here. So by that being said, it's a three-year contract. We can bring it forward and take a vote and see if we go off a bid, and if there's any question, well, we should have our legal advice on this. But in the meantime, we have to take a vote tonight to go forward. Otherwise, we got another year contract, and if you read in the form, the price, it can go up. And that's another point I have. We do bid a price, it's X amount of dollars for X amount of materials, and here it says it can be increased after the first year, and I'm not happy about this contract. So with that being said, I'll make a motion that we notify the company we're going off a bid and have to give them a thirty-day notice as of tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that for purposes of discussion. Motion made, second. We'll have now a discussion on it. Kevin?
Dr. Malby, to Kurt's point, would you interpret under terms proposal number three? That does look to me like an evergreen clause where the contract is renewed every year unless they're notified ninety days ahead of time. So they'll consistently be at their three-year contract, so at that point, we'll never be able to go out to bid unless we take this action tonight to send the ninety-day notice. I don't see any harm in going out to bid, seeing what the prices are, and then if we can't save any money, then we'll stay where we are, but we at least have served them notice, and we've been able to exercise our option to go out to bid down the road because we're going to be in a point here of trying to squeeze every dollar that we can, and we may have the same luck that we had in pursuing the trash issue that Kurt had brought up. So I don't see any harm in going forward with it.
Well, I would suggest this, that I would agree that, yes, under the provision three under section two, that's what it means, that it does, you know, go forward, but number two, under section two, is the piece that Julie was referring to, that it looks like it's a three-year piece. So if you do act on it, I would ask that it be contingent upon a legal review.
Sure.
So that we're not doing something for the good and then find out that we got ourselves into a legal tangle on it too, and I'd be happy to review it with counsel to see which way we can go on it.
Yeah.
I have seen these before, and they are what they are. I mean, it says it here in black and white, but I've also been able to talk to vendors to kind of shake loose a little bit on it.
Right.
So I'd be more than happy to give that a try, but I don't want the committee to go ahead and vote and think that it's a done deal. I would ask that it be qualified to have a legal review to make sure we're on solid ground.
Well, I think certainly make any changes, we need to have that, but I don't see any problem with sending them the ninety-day notice, just we've got to meet that timeframe, otherwise we're going to be out in the cold here, you know?
That's fine.
And if some of the things go through that we are hoping don't go through, we might not have our funding for supplies, so we might be okay, you know?
Mr. Chairman.
It actually states in item two, it says, three years unless Spencer Eastbrook Field Regional School District loses its funding for supplies. Well, we just cut a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars out of our budget for supplies, so I think that certainly indicates that we've made a significant cut in supplies. So I certainly support this as well, and I will support that it goes to legal to make sure that we're on solid ground.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Kurt.
I just wanted to add, I looked in the, in our report, Spencer report, as of this past month, we got here. I add up the figures, it comes to eighty-three thousand, two hundred thirteen, so if we got some more time to go, if you want double that, it could be almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollar contract. I mean, it's not peanuts here. And did save money on the trash, and I think we could save money on this also.
Any further discussion?
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I wasn't on the board at the time, but if we could ask the secretary to research the minutes to see when this was approved and voted by the board, I would appreciate that, and I'd like that information in our packets for our next meeting.
If we could, Mr. Chairman, also would like to request the information, if it did go out to bid, we'd like to see whatever that, the other bids were.
Get that, Mike. So we have a motion in front of us. I don't know if you want to table it until we have further from the lawyers?
No.
No?
You have to vote no, Mr. Chairman, to be that ninety-day window.
Well, okay, but this is, I'm reading this as a three-year contract that was signed in February two thousand thirteen.
Correct.
So that means we got two more years on this contract, no? We have a ninety-day window, but we have to notify them, otherwise they get another year automatically added. So, okay, we need to take the vote tonight and contingent upon legal, counsel.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? So hold. Thank you. Thank you, Kurt, for picking that up. Virtual High School, Amy Paul, hearing.
Right, I've been in discussion with Mrs. Paul. I believe she's here this evening. She was earlier, but upon further review, she's requesting that this be deferred. She's not going to make any comments this evening. She understands that it's a work in progress, if you will. She's had conversation with me. I believe she's had conversation with Mr. O'Brien as well. So we're going to table this for now, and if it is necessary, she's in agreement that she would come back at the January meeting and address the issue.
Thank you. In front of you, you have personnel information?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Good. Through you to the superintendent. Dr. Malby, can you just give me a short explanation on why we hired a behavior specialist and the need, and just kind of go over that with me, so I understand why we're spending that kind of money at this time of the year?
Because it's absolutely necessary. It's a requirement under special education. We have this individual and this effort, if you will. My understanding is the district has had it for some time, but it's for children that really have some serious behavioral issues, emotional issues, and typically these services get written into their IEP, their individual ed plan. We had an agency that was servicing us, and then they pulled out recently. That doesn't absolve us of our responsibility, so we still had to locate someone. And by doing this, we're able to have greater coverage at less cost than what it was costing us by going with an agency, but it is a requirement in special education.
Was that the contract that we talked about earlier this year?
Right.
Okay, sorry. That's what I was, I wasn't sure what it was, and if we were replacing somebody, if this was an addition. This is actually, we had nixed that contract, and we put a person on staff.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Well, they nixed the contract. They pulled out on us and left us, therefore we still had to provide the services, so it took us a little bit of time. We were fortunate to locate someone of the caliber that we need, but it is a legal requirement in special education.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Kurt.
Just ask Dr. Malby, with that being said, when it was a contract you need pull up, don't we, don't we have any comeback on it? You have a contract, you walk away, and we're stuck?
No, we didn't.
You didn't have a contract?
We did have a contract, but we had no recourse on it.
So would that mean, are you planning in the future that we have some kind of recourse? People pull out of contracts?
Well, possibly, but I'll be honest with you, you really can't force anyone to do anything these days.
No, but if they were.
But to your point, typically if we get to that, they'll want some type of protection on their end too, and usually it's a monetary, and typically it runs three months or more with the possibility of a penalty fee, but we certainly can explore it as we get into these issues going down the road.
Can I ask you a question?
I understand your point.
This is time, it would be helpful to us that we got something there.
Right.
But, as you know, we went a month to month with them because we had already talked about hiring this person. So we didn't have a long-term contract with them because we were planning on hiring someone, so it was only a month-to-month contract.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Malby, the library clerk at Wyatt Village, is that a replacement of somebody that's gone, or is that, is that a?
It's a retirement.
It's a retirement?
A retirement?
Retirement qualification.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, I see it. Anything else? If not, we'll go on to the school newsletters, which you've got in your packages. Hearing for visitors again. Any visitors like to come up? Good meeting. School committee comments, future agenda topics.
Mr. Chairman.
Kenny?
In our packet, we had a letter that I'd like to address. It was from, give me one moment to locate it. It was from Bay Path, and it was from Robert Wilby, and he expressed his displeasure that we didn't attend the open house. I spoke to this at our last meeting, and I spoke that I felt that it was pretty important as part of this district. It is an educational program that's an opportunity that's available to all of our eighth graders that choose to go to a vocational school, and I think we ought to afford this opportunity for this open house for all the eighth grade students. So with that said, I'm making the form of a motion that we ask the superintendent to prepare a draft policy for the school district to allow annually our eighth graders to attend this open house and bring that draft policy back to the committee in January.
Second, Mr. Chairman. Motion made, second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Just a discussion that we originally did it just because we didn't want them to waste a day at school doing this. They could certainly do it on their own time, like people who go to private school, they can make their own arrangements, but we have so many days to teach the kids.
I understand that, Mr. King, and the reason, and that's a valid point, and I think it is a valid point, and I guess the reason I brought this up is because we approved at our last meeting for high school students to go and spend a day at Johnson and Wales College, which is another vocational school, and it's okay for those folks to go, but not for the eighth graders to go. It's a career decision, and let's face it, not all eighth graders really know what they want to do for the rest of their life. You know, forty-year-olds don't know what they want to do for the rest of their life, so, but I think it's an opportunity for them to see what's available by attending, and I think it's a program that the town of Spencer belongs to this, we pay for this. I know Eastbrook Field does not belong to Bay Path, but we certainly pay to this, we pay tuition to this school, we're part of the group. I think we ought to afford them the opportunity. It's a day. That's just my opinion.
Mary?
When we, when this first decision was, did come up three, was three years ago, we did meet as a subcommittee before the vote from the, the actual full school committee was taken to support the decision. The subcommittee consisted of parents, students, teachers, administrators. The two school committee members from Bay Path were actually at this meeting as well, and we were actually trying to resolve a, come to a, an agreement to try and arrange this, this visitation on an early release day of our schools, and then have the parents be responsible for picking up the children at the end of the release day. One of the concerns that parents, students had with this day of going to Bay Path was that they didn't see a full classroom working, where I believe the college, they saw the classrooms working in, in operation. We just didn't come to this decision just to say it's not a valid thing, because it is a valid thing, but many parents that were there also said that it wasn't the student's choice to where they were going to be going to school, it's the parent's choice, and as parents, they wanted to be with their children when they were visiting schools. And one of the other things is, Eastbrook Field students were also attending on this field trip, but yet Eastbrook Field students are not eligible to go to, to go to Bay Path. So it was just a lot of different things that brought us to this vote. It wasn't taken lightly.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'm always amazed at why Spencer is always so different. Now, there's ten communities that belong to the Bay Path family, and we are the only one out of the ten that our kids didn't participate in. It just amazes me why Spencer is always different.
They participated, though. I mean, they went, they just went at the wrong time.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to go back what Mr. Cludia says and what Mrs. Gerken says. The former full-time superintendent, I think this was his idea, they could go on a part-time basis at nighttime and visit, and I was opposed to that then, I voted against that then. Like Mr. Cludia says, they go to Johnson and Wales, they go to schools on daytime when the school is open, open for kids to go see what they want to do, and I think this is, this is important for the kids who want to take a trade in this economy to go there. We are a member in Spencer, in a way. We pay our share, we're paying money for the new building up there, two hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars that was voted at the town meeting on no right. We should have an opportunity for the children to go see. If you don't go see, how you going to know where you want to go? The parents will say, yeah, but we are members, so it comes out of our budget, our town's budget, to pay for them to go there. And if a student wants to be a cook, a plumber, et cetera, that's when they go and see, not the parents to make a call, because if the parents want you to go to be a lawyer and you don't want to be there, you're not going there. So I think it's important that we allow them to go there, and then talk with the parents, and we provide busing down there to and back if they do go to school, so it's not on the parents' responsibility. And I remember outstandingly that the two members, Mr. Wheel was one of them, and there was another man, Mr. Sileski, Mr. Solowski, or something like that. They came there and they were upset that we didn't send any students there. So we should afford them the opportunity to go there. It doesn't cost us any money. We're already paying to go there.
Mr. Chairman.
Danny, let me just division one thing. This is to talk about future agenda matters. This is not really to make motions on things that aren't on the agenda.
Are you serious?
Yes, I am.
Okay, shut me down.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that.
But again, we're putting it on the next.
I think you're way off base, John.
We're bringing it on the next agenda.
I think you're way off base, but that's okay.
And we can vote on it then.
Let's not do school business on school time. Let's do it some other time.
Let's put it on the agenda so we're not caught with an open meeting violation. Thank you.
Open meeting violation? Mr. Chairman, is that what you said, open meeting violation?
Correct. If we're talking about something that's not on the agenda, that you've brought up in the past on us, what does it say that we're talking about the Bay Path school on this agenda?
He's talking about enrollments. Is that correct?
No. We're on the school committee comments, future agenda topics.
So that's the timing I talk about, Mr. Chairman?
In the future.
Future?
Right, next agenda. Thank you, Kurt.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I got something to say, something differently.
Okay.
I did see in our packets, if this is up to date, there was two packets, one from Lake Street School and one from Wyatt Village School, what was going on. I didn't see any packets, if any, on the school. Is there a reason why it didn't happen, Mr. Chairman?
I certainly don't know.
Well.
They were emailed.
Well.
So they usually will give, I will mail you yours, Kurt. I didn't have all of them mailed yet, but I will put them in the mail. I have one for you, actually, but the others I will mail.
Well, to get back to email, Mr. Chairman, this was always been in the packet, so I have to disagree with you. It's always in the packet every month, and this month it didn't happen. It happened about a year and a half, about a year ago, I asked them and they came in, no problem, but I think this is a public forum, so people want to know what their school's doing, and we can see what's going on. I'm sure it was a busy time.
She said she was going to give them to you, Kurt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you would like to bring up in future agendas?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Kevin? If we could, teacher evaluation, if we could get a report from the superintendent. I'd like to know where we are with it, in some form a definitive answer as to where we're going, are we going to use what was in place that we've talked about, are we making adjustments to it, or where do we sit with it at this point? And the next item I'd like to have on, but I'd like to ask Dr. Malby first, his thoughts on it and stuff. Trying to get a handle- Trying to get a handle, Ted, on the total expense of special ed, all the costs and all the intricacies of their part of the budget. Before we get into preparing for the budget process for two thousand and fifteen, is there any type of a study or survey, or, I'm looking for some type of a review of the special ed department as to where we stand as far as providing the services, the costs and the expense of, of providing it, if there are any other alternative ways? And I had read a report back when I first came on, I think they were due to come out here sometime in October, November, I don't know, with everything going on, they're probably having gotten back to us at this point. And there was a lot of deficiencies and, and things that we weren't meeting at that time that were outlined in the report, and the name of the report escapes me right now at this point, but could you look into that and, and put something together?
Yeah, I don't know if we have anything from a financial analysis, so to speak. We certainly can look at, you know, what we have for the budget and, and, you know, call all that together, but you're probably referring to an older, what's called CPR report, consolidated program review, I would think that, because that's a detailed report that the state does at, at different times, usually a five-year interval.
Yes, okay, that was.
That all communities have to go through. We are scheduled for that in the springtime, so an updated one will be done, but it's probably what you're referring to, and I'll check with the special ed office, we need to get you and the committee, you know, the older version, so to speak, but that's, that's probably so outdated, and we will come under that review in the springtime, we've already notified of it.
My only concern with the reading of the report, it looked like we made little of any progress over the four-year, what have you period at the time, when I had read the report, so I didn't know. And it just seemed to me, it might just be my lack of knowledge of that particular department as a whole. It just seems to be so costly for the services that are being violated, and I'm just wondering if there's a different way of doing business in that department to try to reduce some of the expense.
Be happy to bring the phone.
Okay.
Jim, you could also put on for next agenda, the superintendent's search committee at some point.
Kurt, go ahead.
Just a follow-up on what you just said, is Mr. Cludia's comment going to be on next agenda?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, you know, make sure, thank you.
If I may, just because I don't want the committee to, to leave, you know, with a bad taste, but by way of explanation, I think what the chairman was trying to get to, the, the item on the agenda is for what are the issues, are future agenda items, and that's what it should be. When you start to get into full-blown discussions and then motions, et cetera, et cetera, you're really deviating from what the legal intent of the current agenda is. And, and I don't take it as that it's a, a desist, if you will, not to deal with the issue, it's just, it should be raised and brought forward and appropriately put on the agenda for the future meeting. So, if the committee can take it in that context, I think we still can get to the issues that seem to be on everyone's mind of whether we, we go back to what had happened in the past, prior to a superintendent recommending to the committee and the committee approving not to officially visit. All right, so I don't think there's any intent not to discuss the issue, it's just when you deviate from it, it can be challenged, that it is not on the agenda, therefore, it's inappropriate, not to raise the issue, but inappropriate to fully discuss it.
Anything else on the following, in future agendas? Hearing nothing? Take a vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if in a public meeting, may be detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the CHSOP players.
So, move.
Second. Motion made second. We'll call vote, Kurt?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Kevin? Josh?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Motion to go into executive session, approved, we'll only come back to adjourned in regular open session. Thank you very much for coming this evening, and Merry Christmas to our audience.